All over included this time, I'd like to ask the mayor-elect, the leaders of the pledge of allegiance.
Dear my father, thank you for the study.
Thank you.
Pledge.
United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brother Mike, first babies, let's give us a prayer.
Put your bow with me, please. Almighty God, our Father, we come and approach your throne of grace, and we come in the name of your son, the Lord Jesus Christ. We want to first of all prevail on you to watch after our mayor while he's in the hospital and give strength to him and help him to be back with us very soon. Father, we understand from your word that you have ordained government so that rather than chaos, we can have order. And I pray, Father, that we would have that order tonight because you've also enjoyed us in your word that things should be done decently and in order. And we pray for each participant tonight. We pray for the one who is acting as the moderator tonight, that you would give him the ability to conduct this meeting in the way that it should go. And for each board member, Father, we just pray for you to lead them and direct them in this time together. Help us now, Father, that when we leave this place tonight, even though we may have some disagreements, that we will be agreeable in our attitudes. And we ask you all in the name of your son and our Savior, the precious and lovely Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion?
I'm making motion with for the minutes.
Motion for Brenda, seconded by Dennis, to approve the minutes.
Hipsy?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Next item, Ms. Hannah, report. Any questions? On what you've got, she's got three amendments on bills.
Yes.
Tell them what they are.
Yes, I've got a couple of invoices, a couple of days since I got your packets. Suzie, morning. I have an invoice here from Williams Automotive. This is going to be charged to the police department. And it's work that was done on all three of the police cruisers, plus work on the Charger to get it up and running because it is still in service. It's still in usable condition. That bill is seventeen hundred eighty-four dollars. I also have a bill for Ford Construction Company for the street department where they bought eight tons of cold mix, which is eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents.
Say that again.
Eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. And lastly, I have invoices from Yates Hardware. I have one for the street department for two ninety-four eighty-three and two for the water department, totaling one fifty-two fifty-eight.
You look around town, a lot of the potholes and whatnot been fixed the last couple of weeks. That's where that eighty-eight comes into play. They use that to fix a lot of these shortages.
If you guys want to pass, if you guys want to pass this around, this is the, this is the work that was done to all three Explorers and the Charger. The total of one thousand four hundred and six dollars of that seventeen hundred was to get the Charger back in operation. We also have it scheduled to be put in the shop for a paint job on Monday and also the decals that go on it so it matches the other vehicles. So to get this vehicle back up and running is going to cost us somewhere around thirty-two hundred dollars altogether. And.
Big cost, right?
It's going to save a lot of wear and tear on the other vehicles. We're also part of this grant. We're trying to get another vehicle and that's probably going to ensure that the city doesn't have to buy a vehicle for at least three years.
How many vehicles we got in operation right now?
Four.
Four. So we've got four now?
Yes, sir.
It's.
The Charger, the Charger's out of the shop right now.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's road ready, but we want to be professional so we're going to get it to match the Explorers.
Any questions? Motion.
I make motion to approve the bills today.
Second. Motion by Renee, seconded by W.C., Roll Call.
Brenda?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Motion here. Next item, longevity and gift card.
We got to do the financial reports.
Oh.
Those separate from the bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by W.C., Roll Call.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
All right. Next, next item, longevity and gift card. Any questions?
We only had one person that's getting longevity this year.
Correct.
And the rest are getting the gift cards. I like to see us with the price of everything that we increased that gift card this year. Of course, if the prices go down, you know, you can look at it again each year. It's a separate year anyway.
Motion.
On the report I gave you, I broke it down at the bottom what the total would be for each women.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Jess considered an employee in the city since she's the dog catcher?
I didn't hear what you said.
Is Jess considered an employee in the city since she's the dog catcher?
She's not.
I'm sure.
She's not supposed to be.
Okay, all right. I just, I'm just asking.
Any other questions? Anybody? Your motion.
I'd like to put that in form of a motion.
I'll say.
Motion for Brenda, seconded by Renee, Roll Call.
Is that at the higher limit, the two?
The two.
Okay. W.C.?
Just the higher limit of what now?
Two.
Going to two hundred instead of a hundred due to inflation on the grocery.
And that will mean that Daryl will get an extra.
Yes.
He'll get a gift card for the difference in his.
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis?
No.
Nancy?
Yes.
Motion here. Next item, Ms. Sheila, address, that insurance.
Yes, I, I, with me tonight, Mary Lust, he is a new partner in our agency in Tiptonville. And he's building a house and will be moving to Lake County shortly. Welcome. So he's, he's going to be your neighbor.
Good, good.
Yeah.
But he's at the lake.
He is at the lake. He is at the lake, for sure. Oh. Our. Luke Cross, Lucille, Brutus, as you know, is, our renewal is January the first. We have currently on the medical, we have a four thousand dollar deductible with a fifty-five hundred out-of-pocket max. There is a preventative drug card. There's a list of prescriptions and the employees have that. If, if the, it's preventive routine maintenance prescriptions like blood pressure, cholesterol, those sort of things. If the prescription is on that list, then they just pay these co-pays, ten dollars for a generic, thirty-five for a preferred brand, and sixty-four non-preferred. So they don't have to meet their deductible if the prescriptions are on that list. And currently, we have seven covered members, and I had listed those at the bottom of the page who are current covered members. And for our renewal, the benefits are not changing, but we're having approximately a seven percent rate increase. The medical's going from three thousand six ninety-nine to four thousand three if we renew as we are. And as you know, on the medical, we have, the employees are responsible for the first two hundred and fifty. After that, the employees bring in their receipts, their EOBs, that shows that they have spent more than two hundred and fifty dollars, and then they're reimbursed for the expenses over that up to the out-of-pocket max. And Beth was going to check and see what that's been paid this year.
We've only had one employee that has turned in receipts to have actual deductible payments made, and it was for the full thirty-seven fifty due to a hospital stay. And that's, that's the only one at this time that's turned anything in.
So the HRA has paid out three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So. Any questions about how that works? I think it's working. There would be no other way for us to afford a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible without it working that way. And we've had it, y'all know, we've had it that way for several years, and I believe it's working. Any questions on the medical? On the dental, there are no changes. The rates are staying the same, the benefits are staying the same, the same for vision and the life insurance. We have twenty thousand for each member. We actually had another employee that's on the life insurance that's not on the other benefits, and that's listed at the bottom as well. But each employee that's under age sixty-five has twenty thousand life insurance, and that doubles to forty if death or to an accident. So. The renewal, just as is, if January the first, will increase by three hundred and three fifty-seven a month or three thousand six forty-two eighty-four for the year. I've attached all the benefit summaries just so you have those in case you need to review. But no change to the benefits, everything stays the same, and you can just increase on the medical, not the other benefits.
Now, we have more employees now.
This is all that's covered.
At this time, that's the only people that are.
That went down there with the life only, isn't it?
He does need to be taken off there.
Okay.
We're on the bottom.
Okay.
But we will have, we've got a couple of employees that have not met their ninety days yet, or their sixty days, that they will be quickly.
Okay.
Ready to enroll.
They're in their waiting period.
They are.
Okay. But as of today, this is who they're covered.
Any questions? What was the out-of-pocket match?
Yeah, five thousand five hundred is the most that any employee could be out.
In what part of that does the city have to pick up?
All of it, two hundred, well.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven fifty. Should, should they, should they use it? And this year, there was one.
Runs the board.
And this is January one?
Right.
I hate for us to make the decision when a new board is coming in.
But at the same time, when new board don't know, it's not for me.
Well, actually, it's not going to, it's, it's just whether we continue with this plan or not, and I don't. As far as looking, they're going to be looking at the money, they're going to be looking at a budget on it and everything, so I.
So the city pays one hundred percent of the premium for the employee only?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, hundred percent.
And, and the city also funds the HRA account.
Correct. Been had away for a number of years.
Called change.
That, that's what I'm saying, Denise.
Yeah.
Did I, you know, I, I feel like it should be the new board that makes that decision. Just carry it on.
But if we, if we, if we table it and don't do anything right now, is that going to make these people lapse in their insurance? Do we have to renew by January first? Could we just renew February first?
No, no, we, we have to notify the cost, you know, by the end of December.
Is it a full-year contract or do they do it quarterly?
It's a full year. I mean, you can cancel anytime, you know. Can you make plan changes after January one? Can we make plan changes? You could.
So whatever we did tonight can be changed if they look at it and, and have a different opinion of it. I don't want our people to lose any insurance coverage, but with a new board coming in, I think they should be a part of it.
And, but the new board won't meet until January?
Correct.
Nice switch.
January the, I don't, was it the twelfth, the thirtieth?
January the ninth.
The ninth, okay, yeah, it's early.
But if we can make a plan change, you know, that would be okay if we renewed it for, in my personal opinion, it'd be okay to renew it for January one as long as we can make a plan change. But the change would have to go back to January, it would have to be retroactive to January.
Well, it's an early meeting, so that's early in the plan, and you could, they could look at the plan and kind of have an idea what to do. Well, I'd like to just see it remain as is for the period of time.
And basically what.
Yes.
Motion for Brenda.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Nancy.
What were you going to say?
So I said, basically, what you might consider is the HRA for the employees' portion of the cost, if, if any. But that's basically what you might consider, not, not necessarily the deductible or out-of-pocket changes.
So that was the new board to make the decision. We, we renew it so they don't lose anything, and they make a, do a thing well enough to.
Roll Call.
W.C.
I, I, seconded.
I did.
You did?
W.C.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, so, so do we, we need to plan on being here again for the January ninth?
I'll let you know.
My plan?
I'll let you know.
Do you have, do you have some extra copy that you could give to?
One of them now gives.
I'll get board members here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Your mayor elects in the house. Ash Hambleb.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, other old business, was the incinerator.
I talked to Mr. Don earlier today. Anyway, he's been talking about, we, we really need, and I talked to Beth about trying to find where we can find some money for that incinerator situation because people do cannot, they don't have any place to go dump the stuff. We've got to be able to use the incinerator.
People, citizens, people.
They're, they, it's just the city.
They can't get rid of it if they can't go dump it. Correct.
Anybody in town.
Everybody don't have, everybody, everybody don't have these.
Up there what they want. They're not, they're not keeping them from, from, from carrying.
I understand that, but I, I got a neighbor that don't have trucks.
Well, for right now, until January, we're too busy to let back here, and then leave it up to newborns what they want to do, but we, I mean, we didn't put it in the budget.
And it wasn't there.
And that's not a decision I feel like this board ought to be making, that's a decision that the new board needs to look.
I asked Don before.
Sixteen, somewhere between sixteen and eighteen thousand. But that's double dipping.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you could carry your truck up there and, and dump all you want, but if we go over here and pick up a load for Ms. Emily, and all we're doing is picking up trash for her to carry up there, they want to try to stop us and force us to pay sixteen thousand? When you're already paying city and county taxes? There ain't nothing right about that.
No.
Nothing.
I agree.
All right, well.
Well, what the situation is too, is they're wanting, they're wanting the city originally to pay the same amount that the city of Tiptonville does.
Now, what was the amount they asked for? What was the amount?
We're not a fraction of the size of Tiptonville.
Sixteen-five, I think.
Tiptonville is paying more than that.
They're paying more.
Seventeen fifty a month.
Seventeen fifty, well, he's that, what they, when I talked to Danny, it'd be the same unless the community approved it.
Somebody said sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen-five, I think, is what, what they told me. Don couldn't go up there for the meeting, and I went, and, and I, and that's what I told him, I said, you know, if we're just picking it up for Ms. Emily. And I had a couple of them get smart, it was either Mark County Commission.
I was up around them, I remember the meeting.
Yeah, it's, they, they ain't nothing right about that.
Only thing, when you have storms come through, blow trees down and cut them, you're going to have someone to take them. They're on the road, it's city's responsibility to get them out of the road. Where you going to take them?
You can't burn them.
And there's some people, me, for instance, I don't have a truck. I'm by myself.
A lot of people don't have a truck.
You know what I'm saying? So that's.
Well, for the time being, for the next two months, we've got adequate space out here at the lake.
Okay.
That will sit you down, that's what I'm saying. Y'all, the newborn can make the decision, whether you want to pay the county.
People are not, people are not going to take it. They put it on the side of the street.
Yes, should they hold out?
So that's going to cost the city something there.
Yes. But I, I still feel like that's a decision y'all need to make instead of us.
Well, it wouldn't matter, right?
Well, it's not in the, it's.
Well, they both go out there with limbs that would burn.
Can I ask for that budget?
And what are you talking about?
They didn't have it.
Where's that, they have the street by the bank?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. There's the, where the branches, there's the limbs, the city's old fence there.
I can't hear.
Motion for Brenda to type into January.
We hold it down, we say please.
Roll Call.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
And I think that, I think the city, I think the city is collecting one dollar a month because it's Liam pick up. And, you know, it's. That don't make what the cost is. All right, under your business, call the chief tubes, what's the grant?
So originally, the police department was awarded a grant of July first of twenty-three, and it ended in June of twenty-four. There was an extension that was sent out, so we actually have the grant again, and it's for forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars for the police department. The, the original proposal was the license plate reader, and that was, that was a total of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. With the help of Chief England in Tiptonville, we, we looked into this, and there is no match to that, that's one hundred percent grant, but the city would be out over a total of five years, roughly fifty thousand dollars in, in upgrades and maintenance and, and so on and so forth. So we feel like, or I feel like, our police department is hurting a lot more right now than to be putting tag readers in. So what we're going to do is we're going to send in an amendment, and we're going to add another vehicle to that. It's, the vehicle's from Missouri. Also, we're going to add, you know, you guys told us last month that we could get new vests out of the general fund because we didn't have it in our budget. We're going to take that money out of this grant instead of the general fund for the vests.
Good.
That's good.
Also, new weapons for the police department, another computer for the police department. And like I said, that, that would put us where we needed to be on vehicles, just to guarantee that the city's going to be in pretty good shape as far as that goes for the next three years.
That's good.
That's good.
Sounds good. And there's no grants at all out there for labor?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, the only thing is, he's got two that's going to be going to.
I have one, I, I just have one going to the academy.
Just one?
Yeah, I had to terminate one.
We won't have to pay for that, that's.
No, we won't have to.
Yeah, that's. We're in the, the entire county, as a matter of fact, all agencies are in the property area where we don't have to pay the same sum to the academy.
That's wonderful.
But we don't have to pay the labor.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on that? No. Sounds good. Any response?
Oh, if I could add to that, I was made aware that the board, they voted to have step raises, and it was in, in the budget. We hired Officer Rivers, and the assistant chief pay that Joel was making was twenty-one dollars per hour. We brought Austin in, and we're only able to pay him twenty, considering that it's just me and Austin. I was asking if we could go ahead and put him at the twenty-one dollar mark, seeing how it is in our budget anyway. It's just two of us out there, and we're.
Are you making him the assistant chief?
Absolutely.
Well, then, yeah, that's, that goes with it.
That's what I, that's, that's what I thought, but I was, I was told to bring it before you guys.
That, that goes with it.
As long as you have.
That's a decision you make.
That, that's, that's what I wanted to.
That's why we put that pace scale in place like it was.
That's what I thought, but like I said.
Didn't the pay scale show twenty starting though, and that's why I told you?
It, it did show twenty starting, so to be on the safe side, that we weren't breaking any rules, bringing it to you guys, and I would, I would like to put him at that pay.
Yeah, that's. That's your program, your formula. Any other question?
Thank you for doing good, quite funny.
Good report.
Well, also, we're spending a lot of money also. You, you guys are hearing some of the good stuff, but.
It's time he comes in my office.
When you're, when, when you're trying to build something, you know, cost, so the biggest thing that we're spending on is equipment and uniforms. I believe we're done there, with the exception, if we were to get a certified officer in here, we would have to outfit him. But if you look, the majority of our budget is being spent on uniforms, equipment, and of course, vehicle maintenance, which is going to pay dividends in the long run.
And how long has Austin been working?
Probably, maybe a couple, maybe a month, a, a month.
So I must say, but if you wanted to, and it's in your budget, go back and pick him up for the month he's been here, if you put him in at chief then.
I do, and I, and I'd like to do that.
Retroact.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for doing such a good job.
Absolutely.
In the short time that you've been here, a lot of things have changed during this town, and a lot of people have noticed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And too, Jason, I, I don't think we've met since, I think here, what, two, three weeks ago, you made a, a drug bust and a gun bust here.
Yes. We appreciate that. We've made, we've made multiple arrests from drugs, guns, domestics, vandalism, theft. You're, you're going to see in court, which we had a full house the other night, but court was canceled, but our tickets are, are up, we're, we're doing the best we can out there with, with two guys.
Well, we certainly appreciate what you got going on.
It was, it was an agreement between Joel and.
Josh Kaiser?
Yeah, Josh Kaiser, it just wasn't passed on to me, so we had court. So what I did, I just issued everyone a reset notice for the reset.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next item was, it's that time of year, bids on the cemetery for spraying and more. We've had one bid turned in for spraying. It was from Fuller Evergreen, pass that around. The one, this go around, and I, what were we paying them last year?
Did that get advertised?
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did, it went to paper on October the sixteenth, it was in the paper the following week, and the deadline was October thirtieth at twelve o'clock to turn in bids.
Yeah, I haven't put it in the paper.
So, uh, what is the bid on the spraying, Frank?
The bid disco round, that's what I was trying to figure out, twenty-two hundred something.
Twenty-seven, the first application, I think it's twenty-two, the second maybe, it was a little bit less on the second.
Twenty-nine, uh, two thousand nine hundred and four dollars is what he's asking for disco round for one spraying, in, uh, February and March, in that time frame. If he done it twice, February, and then again in September, October, somewhere longer, it would reduce down to two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four per application, with a total of five thousand seven hundred and eight. And he gave a similar bid last year, but two hundred dollars per application cheaper, uh, and we chose to go with just the one application in the spring. I will emphasize the fact that since we started the spraying, it has eliminated on the average of five mowings, and the mowings have been running us around a thousand dollars. So it, it saves us, we spent three thousand, saved two thousand.
Give a few. I mean, if you spray that, it needs to be sprayed like this winter or this fall.
I've ordered that.
With primers, and then you spray it again in the spring, and then through midsummer, you can hit it with a growth regulator that'll stop it from growing, and that's gonna help advance. But we're gonna have to quit using round up, round up tombstones, because that's what's making them settle and get all falling over and everything.
And the mowers.
Yeah, the mowers care.
Well, Ronnie.
But they got something for that, and they spray that, but that's.
Ronnie Welch, he, he, he highly recommended that it be sprayed twice a year.
I mean, spray twice would be good, three would be better, but I understand, I mean, money's money.
And Four Evergreen's the only one that tried to do that?
That's the only bid we've got.
So the third spraying would probably run another approximately the same as the second.
That's what he's showing there, what he's showing in a little bit cheaper.
Twenty-eight fifty-five.
Yeah, I'm talking about if there was the third spraying, though, like he mentioned.
Probably be another twenty-eight fifty-five.
So it'd probably be somewhere another around.
How much, but how much, when you put that growth regulator on, a bit of stunt it back, how much you gonna save for the number of mowings versus that extra spraying?
Well, like I say, the, the, us, this be the seventh year, this be the seventh year, we've done it the last six, and it saved a minimum of five mowings.
Yeah, it does.
The minimum of five, and one year when it got, and we had a lot of rain, and that grass would jump in left and right, it was nine or ten mowings.
I'm gonna say that when it rains, that, that's, I mean, that's a relative, you, you gonna mow. But now, if you put the plant grow down, then you're, you gonna have a mow.
But it has, it has paid for itself.
But that's also, it should, it should apply to the other city properties for it, it being able to stun the grass, cut down on a lot of this mowing. You know, we just bought, uh, about twenty thousand dollars worth of lawn mowers, and they mow every time you turn around, but I, I've tried to say something to Donnie about coming up and. Ask these chemical guys what could be used to stun this grass. Uh, I know, but, uh, you know.
I mean, biggest thing is you're gonna have, somebody's gonna have to be, if you're gonna have to hire it out, or somebody's gotta go get the.
Training.
Classification, the trainings and lots of. That's, that's where you get in trouble, I mean, just anybody, and now, you can do your personal yard, and nobody can say anything.
So, uh, city government, uh.
Somebody had to be trained.
And we got one bid, most of them, the board.
I had a motion to go with them.
He's got a motion, Brenda. Second, but Renee, roll call.
Nancy?
Well, no, wait, just to me, that, is that two, two sprays?
Which one with the two sprays?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's another situation, can, if we go with the two sprays now, can we add a spraying if we wanted to?
Well, you can.
I'll talk to Scott and Nancy.
I think she, I'm sure he can.
And let's stay where we are and.
I'm sure he'll be glad coming up there the third time.
Okay, Nancy? Yes? Nancy?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, on the mowing, we had two bids.
Cemetery.
I mean, mowing at cemetery, correct.
Put my glasses on.
I plan to put her glasses on.
He's keeping his bid the same as he did last year, eleven hundred, Roger Bell.
Is that, is that down?
And what's the other one?
Where is the other one?
I don't know.
Well, before we even opened the second one, I was gonna say, we've had a lot of complaints about graveyard.
Second bid's from Tri Country.
Tri County.
Tri County.
John Hart.
John Hart, Stone.
Oh, okay. Looks like nine eighty-five.
That's mowing and weed eating.
Yes, ma'am. Frequency of being a distraction of the city. Instruction of the city, that's gonna include mowing, all the spraying training. We do not spray around, uh, around the headstones, we won't do that, but that's gonna include the ditch ban, trash removal. Uh, at each visit, it'll be litter removal, at, you know, basically at per site, and that's gonna include, uh, keeping, keeping the drive lanes and everything, as neatly as possible. One hundred percent full statement.
So you better lost the planes tonight?
Just about everything, it was blown up, and it looks like it was spotted, and that, and, and it could have been, some of that could have been a spraying, I don't know.
Yeah, they, the spraying, the spraying that was done first of the year, it didn't turn out to be, they were. You know, I. I haven't seen, I, I haven't gotten any complaints by some there yet.
Only complaint I had was that about before the spraying. We had to get him back out there.
And was that, uh, remember, was that the, the spring when they, when they brought the pictures in here of?
Well, that was, that was, that was the, uh, driving over, where it was the people from the funeral homes that were, when they were bringing their flowers, they were driving over. And making ruts and everything, and that had, with the, with the vaults and everything, that's what he was complaining about on that. Making ruts.
Well, the bids are like hundred fifteen dollars a mowing difference.
Per mowing.
March is not close to eleven hundreds. Per time. It's only nine hundred eighty-five.
Won't be the will of the board.
When you, uh, when you mow your, uh, you, uh, you raise your flaps up, of course, it's, out there, the cemetery's terrible, it, it is big time.
Hour, hour mowing.
Have to, I, I get it, but what winds up happening out there, the only thing that I see out there that don't look good is all this grass float all over the headstones. And the base of them, all over the headstones, and it, of course, in the state or.
Correct, so, we, we focus on, a little bit more on the premium side of, of quality of things, so we're running both, uh, stand up. As well as sit down mowers, all of the mowers in, in the fleet is, is running on foot operated chute systems. I can completely close our grass down at any given time, and I can open it up as well as we run it anywhere in between. So we can direct grass clippings when needed, uh, I can assure, assure you that, that any grass blowing over here and stuff.
Have you ever mowed a cemetery before?
We mow over two hundred fourteen properties currently.
I'm saying, oh, you've mowed a cemetery?
We, we have not, we, we mow.
You don't know what you're in for.
I, I do, I do, uh, we, we maintain, currently, we maintain the, all the entire industrial district in Diersburg as well as seventy-seven.
I don't doubt you, I don't, I don't doubt you work at all, but I'm just trying to think, cemetery is a whole lot different from anything else.
We can, we can, uh, to answer your question, we can control our grass clippings, yes, sir.
Oh, when it comes to the money, you got it, I mean, in that respect, and. But that's what it's about, that's why we offer a bid.
Well, no, it's not all about the money.
The last two times we've, we've, uh, bidding it out, we've gone with higher bids, last year and year before.
Yeah, but does the dude do the good job out there, you guys having complaints?
You wanna table it and let the January board do it, I mean, it's got to be done in, between now and January, we let everybody know in January, so if the January board.
At the end of January?
They need to know in January who's gonna be doing it.
Can I ask a question on that also, 'cause this is something else that's come up this week that we, I know we did not do last year. Miss Mary McDonald came in yesterday to pick a checkup for a, a grave that they had dug, and she asked me when we were bidding that out, the grave digging. And I said, well, I don't think we did last year, I said, I don't think we did.
They signed a three-year contract.
She said they didn't sign any contract, they were just told they had it.
I thought there was three-year contract.
I thought it was a three-year contract, I think they had, they got one more year left on it.
Okay, 'cause she's saying we never signed a contract, we're gonna go for a year to year if we need to have this redone.
Tell them they got one more.
Tell them they got one more year, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I remember when they did it, they made the bid, they said for a three-year term.
Okay.
Uh, can you find a contract, that's the thing, who's got a contract?
I don't, if it's not in the cemetery files.
In the case, if somebody produces it, then you don't have a contract.
Then it's just year to year.
Yeah. But I, I, I know that when they made the bid, they said it was on a three-year term.
And I thought when they made the bid that they did, um, they were gonna fill in till we found somebody else, 'cause at the time, that's when, um, Mr. Goodman was sick, and they were, we were trying to use him just to.
According, according to her, that's how it started, they were filling in, and then they were just saying, y'all can just have it, she said it was never a contract, they just kept on doing it. So she was asking me, do we need to go ahead and put out a bid? No, just for that.
Have you looked for a contract?
I do not have a contract.
We did negotiate with him for more than one year.
Okay, yeah, there, in the cemetery files, there is no contract.
Well, there's no contract in.
Right.
All right, but on the, on the mowing, you gonna.
Mowing, table it to January? That, that'd be fine.
Well, we gotta be simpler, if you wanna go.
I mean, you always go the lowest bid.
January, the new board they carry.
I said, to me, you always go the lowest bid, and that's why you bid it out.
Yep.
Gonna save about four thousand dollars.
Couple mows.
Will the board. Will the board.
That's right, that's right, to pay for the extra spraying.
Why would you wait? What, what are you gonna accomplish, I'm sorry, wha, while, are you gonna make a decision tonight, or you gonna wait till January, what will be different?
You'd have a newborn making the decision.
Yeah, but.
Okay, but that's the only difference?
They're the ones gonna have to satisfy the need of it, instead of being stuck with something that we said.
When's the next time that it gets mowed?
It won't be.
I don't know whether they just did more final cutting, that was it, but, you know.
It'd be February or March.
How often does it get cut when mowing season starts?
As needed.
As needed.
Usually once a week, sometimes it'll be stretched.
As needed, but we've always had a standard, uh, rule that, uh, before any major holiday, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Veterans Day, Fourth of July. Major holidays, if he mowed the week before, he still mows that Thursday or Friday before that holiday.
Right now, you all the board, but you have, have one board member to, you know, hear some complaints, then number two. You got a, you got two people that's bidding, and one man's lower, and that's why you solicit bids, but, but, you know, I know, some of those bids, you do reserve the right, refuse all bids, blah, 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 doesn't necessarily mean. The cheapest bid, but when you have complaints from the current man, you know.
And I did say that I wasn't sure if it was the spraying, or the, but there was complaints that the graveyard just had.
It's just a rate.
That was, uh, yeah, that was spraying part, it, I know they had spiced it, grow it up about there in the spraying.
What's Will's board?
Wait, come in here, it's interesting.
I, I'll make a motion that way, that we go with the lowest bid.
Motion, but Renee?
Well, second.
Second, Nancy, roll call.
Nancy?
Yes.
Brenda?
No.
Yes?
No.
Motion carries. All right, next item, zoning of downtown buildings, Renee, let's go.
Uh, it's my understanding that, that some of the personal properties are being, um, sold, or is, an opportunity that some of them are gonna sell, and. I don't know if we can, because that is a privately owned buildings down there, I'm, I'm really talking about the ones that are personally owned.
The ones where all them decorations were?
I'm trying not to say that. Personally owned, I'd say it's residence, as a residence.
Yes.
Um, I, 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 I suppose at the beginning, that was not anything against settlement to whomever might want to be in it, and so, because it is presently owned by a person. Um, if they sell it, um, because it is a downtown property, if we can say that it, if, and we may not can, it may not, that may not be legal, I'm just asking. If we can say it be for commercial use only, and if we can't, then I wanna put specifications in the downtown of what we expect anybody that owns a property downtown to make it look.
For sale.
Good.
All, all those buildings down there are commercial.
And they said they're own business.
So then, so then, is it, are they living there illegally to be living there?
Did they change the zone?
They're, they're.
And if we didn't change the zoning.
There, it's, it's zone, it's in the, it's in the commercial zone, but on the tax record, the three properties in question are being charged residential rates. Which, we don't know who went in there and changed it.
Yeah, we do.
One is commercial, one is residential.
I know, right? How can we change it?
One is commercial, one is residential.
Well, there's a third one too, and that third one was, when we checked this week, was residential.
Oh. So who changes that, with the, could the property assessor change, I mean, who changes that? Well, we have a zoning board, our assessor.
One, 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 I've been there all forty years.
Yeah.
Well, and.
I think that was the only exception, didn't it, at the time that Travis Stavers wanted to move there, when they, they go for the mayor's board and get that one exception out.
He, he may have, but say, that's before my time, but that was, that's probably forty years ago.
Yeah, it's been that long.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I think he got.
I'm just asking, what can we do?
At the time, I think he got the mayor's board to make an exception for him, because he.
Make an exception for Miss Betty, like Nancy just said, that, you know, she live there till she passes, but when she passes, that.
Well, she's, she's in the process trying to sell, that's what part of this is about, she's wanting to zone commercial.
See, they may, they may have resoned his building.
I also understand what that means to that person, that's trying to sell that property so they can purchase something else, that.
But I'm under the understanding that they own two suites, one, one suite they're paying residential, and the other suite they're paying commercial on. So you got the same person owning two suites, paying two different types of taxes.
Well, here's what I wanna know, the one that's on the commercial side, are they, do they have a business tax?
Yes, it's forty percent, the other one is twenty, oh.
No, they pay a business tax, if they, if it's a commercial property and they say they have a business.
I don't know that.
I don't believe so. Okay, there's, so there's just some things that's gone through the hole up here.
That's something that really gonna have to turn over to a lawyer and let them give you some legal advice on, cause I mean, that, we can't, it's not really anything we can make a decision, I, I don't feel like.
I know, cause it's been a zone business in the first place, and so if she sells it, it has to stay a business as far as I'm concerned. But an attorney can tell you whether or not it has some chance.
But if we made an ordinance, just asking, if we made an ordinance saying that any property that was sold, uh, from, from the rescue squad to city hall, and from the post office over here to the bank, um, that any property purchased there has to be used for commercial use.
That's something to see the attorney.
Right, just.
Now, you gotta do, do ordinance, but you gotta do it, you gotta vote on twelfth.
Yeah.
Well, I checked with Dana Dean this week at Empas, and he had no recommendation, and said we needed to reach out to the city attorney. Because of the different in and ins and outs of the zoning laws over the years, he said that somebody was really gonna have to research it and see what they did and how they did it.
Turn it over to the city attorney?
That's what I'm thinking, turn it over to the city attorney.
Okay, that's what I'm just.
He might, we'll touch base with, um, the guy from Jackson, see what he has to say, let's help this out before, I think every day.
Turn it over to the city attorney, next item, uh.
The December meeting is, um, all on the, um, would, would be on the twelfth, but we, that's the, uh, Tiptonville Christmas parade, and so I make a motion that we move the December meeting to the ninth.
It'll be hard to do with her getting, I, I say move it to five o'clock, and if you, that'd give you plenty of time, still keeps it on the same date.
It really doesn't, because lineup starts at five.
We'll say maybe like it is.
Well, no, this is what you said about people, you won't have a meeting, this is what happens to people.
The December, not May at all, but we can put it on another day, we have board meeting. Best of, we're taking, we gotta, we ain't have board meeting.
From my point of view, and, and it's, I'll do it either way you want, but one of a couple things are gonna happen, because you got the first, which is a holiday, we won't be there. I would be there the second and the third, um, I'm very possibly could have a class that week, cause I haven't got my class schedule, and they usually fall that week. Um, so if that's the case, with all the other things I've got going on, it's property tax season, it would be very, very difficult for me to get reports done by the night. So if you have the meeting on the ninth, it may be where you don't have financial reports to approve, but I can get them to you later that week, and then y'all can review them, review them and approve them at the January meeting, the meeting.
At least we could meet and approve the bills to be paid, and that's, that's the big deal.
That's the, that's the thing.
So I mean, as long as you don't have an issue with that, it may be the tenth or the eleventh before you get your packet, but we can just approve those during the old business at the January meeting. Now, if I get it done, I mean, I'll do my best, but.
I mean, it's a busy time.
Is, is there a reason we can't push it back to the third week of December?
It's just gonna get some, people's got parties and church stuff, and I mean, it's, or getting, Harry, people coming in by the tail.
We go through this every year in December.
I'd say let's go here with December the ninth, and if we don't have the financial report, we can always approve it the next meeting, and at least pay the bills.
And it won't be behind, it, it's not going to get behind like it was, they will be done that week, it's just with moving the date forward, that gives me three or four days less to get that stuff done.
All right, I made a motion.
Set the meeting December the ninth, motion to Renee?
I'll second it.
Second?
Nancy?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, any questions from the audience? Saying none, motion to adjourn?
Second.